My thought.
No, I believe Jerry, can you hear me?
Yes.
The way you did it, didn't you, didn't you do it? So it was just all one meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct. Yep. So we can continue on.
Perfect.
Uh, I am ready to roll. Hold on, let me share my screen. One second. Everyone can see?
Yeah.
Okay, Council President, you tell me when you're ready.
Ready.
Okay. Um, so this is, uh, like, like we do every year, we're going through, there'll be nine different budget workshops, um, three tonight, three more tomorrow and three more next week. Each gives a high level overview of um, each department's individualized budget, how it's made up of the total budget overall. And then staffing changes and budgetary changes you see year over year. Um, we also asked that each department had come up with a kind of their mission statement, um, for what their role is city. So for the Department of Administration Finance. The mission of the Department of Administration is to promote sound financial stewardship, cultivate a culture of innovation and collaboration and enhance operational efficiency. Through strategic planning, transparency and effective resource management, we aim to support sustainable growth, fiscal responsibility and the overall well-being of our communities. And we broke down, um, the different divisions in ea- in each department. So in the Department of Administration, you have the opposite business administrator who oversees all municipal departments as well as day-to-day operations of the city. The Construction Code Office receives and processes all construction permits and inspects the work of the contractors to ensure all work meets what is required under the Uniform Construction Code. The Office of Constituent Services liaison between members of the public, city officials and other agencies serves as the first point of contact for any residents who are seeking municipal support. Division of Cultural Affairs plans promotes and produces events throughout the city to elevate Hoboken's cultural footprint. The Finance Department oversees the financial operation of the city and ensure ensures that the taxpayer funds are spent in accordance with the adopted budget and all relevant rules and regulations. The Municipal Court is an independent judicial branch of the city of Hoboken, although their budget lives in administration, we have no, um, the administration has no oversight over court operations. Uh, Personnel and Benefits is responsible for all human resources operations of the city. Purchasing reviews all requisitions for the purchase of goods and services by city departments, issues purchase orders and prepares the claims list. And Senior Services provides various services and programs to senior community of Hoboken, including transportation and senior recreation. Now breakdown, um, these are again are over two pages. You'll see a breakdown of the change of employees year over year, twenty twenty-three being on the left, twenty twenty-four being on the right. In the Business Administrator's Office, we went from four to five employees. The additional addition of one employee is not actually a new hire. It was just part of the reorganization. So just uh, again, not a new hire, someone who just moved under the BA's budget line. In the Construction Code Office, we have one, uh, change, um, full-time from nine full-time employees to ten our budget for this year. The new employee is an assistant construction code official to help offset some of the um, backlog that we get and allows for our current construction code official to take vacation and not for that backlog to continue. Um, constituent services remains the same, three cultural affairs, we're seeing one additional employee that's reflective of, uh, Jerry Fallows, um, retirement mid-year. Um, you'll also see the addition of one part-time employee. That's another person to manage, um, lead, uh, other support staff and then also serve as the public art administrator. Um, and then finance, you see a reduction of one. The asterisk is there again, it's not actually a reduction in in force, it's just an employee that was previously in the Finance Department has moved to the, um, Department of Climate Action Innovation. Municipal Court, you're seeing an addition of three employees. Uh, Personnel and Benefits remaining the same, purchasing is remaining the same, senior services is remaining the same. And the Mayor's Office is receiving the s- remaining the same. Overall, you're seeing an addition of five full-time employees to the budget of administration and one part-time employee. And then just by the numbers, um, the Department of Administration, Department of Finance make up six percent of the total appropriations for the city. Um, that it's seven point seven million dollars at the proposed budget and the year-over-year change is about one percent. If you break down by all divisions, and I know that's a tight pie chart there, but I would try to go through it quickly for you. Um, twenty-five percent is made up of the Finance Office, twenty-one percent is in the Court, sixteen percent is Construction Code, twelve percent is the BA's Office. Six percent is the Mayor's Office, five percent is Personnel. Four percent is Cultural Affairs, four percent is City Council, two percent is Constituent Services and one percent is the Public Defender's Office. And then by appropriation type, um, seventy-nine percent of the total budget is made up of salary and wages and twenty-one percent is made up of O and A. And then this is a year-over-year breakdown of each of the divisions. Um, you will see the BA's Office had a four percent reduction year-over-year personnel, um, saw a nine percent reduction. Um, the Bear's Office saw eighteen percent reduction, City Council saw seventeen percent reduction, constituent affairs saw thirty percent reduction. Instruction Code saw two percent reduction. Cultural Affairs saw a hundred and twenty-three percent increase and that increase is related to twofold. One is is the additional staff member that I referenced earlier, but also we have transitioned from both senior services and cultural affairs and a few other, you'll see in the recreation presentation tomorrow. We've been moving away from utilizing the trust accounts, um, as revenue and budgeting for actual costs. Um, this is not only best practice that allows for us to actually keep track and of of monies coming in and monies going out. Um, a an issue that we had in these divisions in previous years. Uh, Municipal Court is going up six percent and the Public Defender's Office is going down twenty, twenty-eight percent. This is not necessarily, um, the city or the court reducing public defender services were actually similar to how we have utilized um, the prosecutor where the city hired a full-time municipal prosecutor, we're about to go out to advertise for a full-time public defender. We think it's more efficient. Um, cost savings and will allow for the court to operate more efficiently. Um, the city of Hoboken has the fourth busiest municipal court in the state of New Jersey. And we're really working with, um, Judge Troy and Judge Pennington, as well as Harry Asenley, the court administrator, to find better efficiencies and operations for them to work more seamlessly. And then, um, the Finance Office, you're seeing a five percent reduction. Um, I know this came up during introduction. Excuse me, um, two weeks ago, but there were questions as it relates to, um, there were reductions in five different offices that relates to salary and wages, and that was really focused on on one piece. Um, in conversations with the city's auditor and best practices in terms of budgeting, we were previously not directly allocating, um, time based on where offices were working. So I I referenced the City Council, you see a seventeen percent reduction in the City Council line, the City Council salaries have not changed, the number of City Council members has not changed, but we have allocated um, twenty percent or in this case around seventeen percent of the total budget for the City Council to the parking utility and to the water utility. And that's to reflect that the work that the City Council does is a far majority of it is part of the general fund, but probably around twenty percent of it is made up of both work it does on transportation and parking and also on water infrastructure. Um, we had, we had made that adjustment in conjunction with our auditor in the BA's Office, uh, Personnel and Purchasing, the Mayor's Office, City Council and the Finance Office. So you'll see in the same percentage breakdown um, of the total budget last year versus how much is being charged. There's no change in actual numbers in those year-over-year, just how it's being charged and to what account. Um, and then this is just a breakdown of the salary and wage and OE and versus the total budget. So I can go through each of these lines, but I think it's they're pretty self-explanatory. Um, this is again, the breakdown of the salary and wage in the left column, the operating expenses in the middle column and the total, um, twenty twenty-four budget, the two added together. Um, and how they reflect, um, seven point seven million dollars, um, of the administration's introduced budget. Um, those are all, that's the kind of high level overview to them. I am able to answer any questions, go back to other slides. I am at your disposal for the foreseeable future.
Thank you, Director. Um. One of the, there's a question in a, um, question and answers that, uh, that says, have the directors been asked to project the impact of the budget based on last year's budget level or actual spending level? You guys go with last, at least as far as I recall, at last year's, what you said last year, correct?
So we, we, we started twofold. One is we look back, the first thing we do is look back at the previous years and assess kind of what was budgeted for versus what actuals were. Um, in the event that they line up and we look at what those actuals were and think that they're going to likely be similar in the tw- in the following budget year, we will budget a similar number, but we, we look at what those are and make adjustments based on what we project in the coming year or the future year, based on what the actuals were for the previous year.
Thank you. Any council members have any question?
Council President, I believe Patricia Waiters is, I s- I just saw
Yeah.
reference to her, our hand being up.
Yeah, I, I texted her back. We'll have a public portion.
Okay.
Thank you, or chat.
Sorry.
That's okay. No worries. I appreciate it. Um, does that, do any other council members or do any council members have any questions?
Council President, I should say one thing, just because I saw a note coming from Councilwoman Fisher, um, related to the, um, broadcast of this via YouTube and Facebook and sh- in her note, it alluded to the administration decided not to stream the meetings. And that's simply not true. Uh, so I just want to be very clear. I don't know if there was a an error or miscommunication as it relates to what Councilman Fisher was told or what was communicated.
I had asked for them to be on YouTube and Facebook. Um, and I believe that never made it to Rod.
That's why I, I, I don't, that's, that part of the communication doesn't come from the administration. So that's the, the city clerk and Rod are the ones who coordinate and communicate all of that. I'm sorry, the city, yeah, city clerk and and Rod are the ones who coordinate all of that. So I just want to be very clear on that piece.
Hi, yes, uh, this is Rod here. Um, it wa- it wasn't communicated in the past. Last year, we did not, uh, broadcast these on YouTube and Facebook. So, um, since nothing was indicated to me that we were changing that practice.
You're gonna put it on Rod, you can put on YouTube.
We have the recording, we'll put on YouTube as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, Jason, I actually, just about the salaries.
Sure.
Come, I understand, like you said, that the auditor had recommended that you take part of our salary. It, it feels weird that we're like very specifically taking it from to revenue sources of our.
So it's, it's taken from six different, it's six different, uh, budget lines. Move and and they're dispersed through three different, um, so it's the general fund, parking utility and HPU. Um, again, i- it is, the auditor's recommendation was this was a, a best practice. I think we're going to try to expand it going forward, knowing that it was something new was, we kind of, and as they recommended, do it in, I wouldn't say baby steps, but incrementally. Um, there's no change in the dollar amounts if, if it is. It's just how it's, it's broken down, um, as something that we have not done in the past.
Right, I mean, in particular, the water utility, I felt like the water utility money very specifically was supposed to go to water infrastructure.
Um, it, 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 again, that, that stuff, that isn't changing. There's no net change to the, the budget itself. It's just where those funds are being allocated towards. So that the amount of money going towards water projects hasn't changed because of this, it's just reflecting where monies, monies are getting, um, dispersed from.
So I think I'm not grasping how that hasn't changed if you're taking part of it and using it towards salaries that it wasn't used for in the past.
The water utilities budget is also still increasing, so it, it's not changing. If I'll, I'll use round numbers. If the water utilities budget last year was a hundred dollars and this year it's a hundred and ten to reflect the monies that are, that are being allocated from the City Council and the Mayor's Line and a few of those other divisions I referenced, you're seeing an increase in the total budget, the water utility, rather than it's not the same year-over-year. So money is not being taken away from those projects.
Right, but if the, if the water utility, the water utilities budget is based on the revenues it brings in though as well, correct?
Correct. That's, that's the largest source of revenue is, is water rates.
What else, what else is in there besides that?
Um, there are connection fees, there are, um, grant sources and there's interest income specific to the water utility. Those are the biggest revenue.
Yeah, so if we, if we weren't using that, if we were just paying ourselves through the general fund,
Mm-hmm.
money would be able to go back into water infrastructure.
It would, yes, but I, I don't think, I guess the, the, the intention on this was not to, and it, it isn't to change how we um, structure or invest in, in water infrastructure. It's both, again, the best practices from our auditor allows us to operate continuously without having to worry about, um, out of the cap, in cap, kind of different expenses and still allows the water utility to grow organically through water rates.
All right, let's see if any, uh, what about any council members' questions?
I mean, I guess I will follow up, Council President. Um, I, I, I will confess, I don't follow this, uh, Jason. The, you, could you go back to the, the slide you just had up? Um, with, there you go. The council, the City Council, I assume, I mean, our, the total salaries of the City Council are roughly three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So how is, how is it that the budget is less than that amount and where's the difference, uh, you know, I, can you, can you explain?
Sure. So the enti- the, it, let's, again, I will, I'll use round numbers. If the, if Jim Doyle's salary, the City Council person is a hundred dollars, that's not changing. But what was discussed between myself, the city's Finance Department and the auditor was breaking down how much of the work of a City Council member is specifically related to the general fund, specifically related to transportation and parking projects and specifically related to the water utility. We kind of did a, we made a decision and broke that down that eighty percent of the work that is done by a City Council member is done through the general fund, which is what's that two hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars is reflecting. And that, I'm sorry, the three hundred and three hundred thousand dollars is reflecting and the remaining twenty percent is broken up between the parking utility and the and the Transportation Department, which you will see reflected in those presentations.
All right, that, that's exa- that was exactly my question. So and then tomorrow or next Wednesday, we'll see a line item for roughly fifty thousand dollars or something. Or do, I guess it's broken both between water and parking.
Correct, correct. And, and, and again, it's not just City Council, it, it's.
Yeah, it'll happen in, in various things. I get it. All right. Thank you.
No problem.
I'm just gonna ask, since people, what people put in the questions, um,
Sure.
How many full-time employees did you say the Finance Department had?
I can, back to that slide, one second. Well.
Um, Deb, I'm sure you can hear me. If you have any other questions, if you want to put your hand up, I can just call on you. It's easier that way. Um, and then before I do that, though, let's see if she raised her hand.
Jen, are you reading the, the, the questions that are taped in as?
Yeah, I'm gonna. I'm gonna, uh, there we go. Hi, Deb.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, yeah, that just seemed like an awful lot of people to me. I, I, I just wonder what all those positions are and what they do.
Well, it's made up of the General Finance Office, Comptroller, CFO, um, a- and other finances, it, under other finance individuals, it's also made up of the Tax Collector's Office and the Tax Assessor's Office, which each have several employees in them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then where is Patricia? Patricia?
Hi Jen, thanks. Um, and thanks, Mr. Doyle. Um, I'm, my question is, Jason, you saying that you keep saying compared with the last previous years, but mo- the last three years, we had a lot of grants from the COVID. Are you counting that money? From all of those grants, because the budget shouldn't be the same.
So no, you're, you're right, Patricia. The budget is not the same and, and the.
Right, because you can't count, I'm sorry, that money that was allocated for the last three years, Jason, we not getting that no more. You know what I'm saying? I mean, some of them go into extension. I mean, just, some of them did have extensions, like at the free holders too, that they didn't spend yet, but you not adding those in this budget, right?
Correct. So the, the ARP funds that you're referencing, um, expire in twenty twenty-four. Um, so by the end of this year, we won't have them on a go-forward basis going into twenty twenty-five.
Okay, because you said it like three times, say from the previous. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Manny, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, yes. Good evening again, um, Council President. Um, I have a few questions. First of all, I, I kind of, and, and forgive me for, uh, the preamble, I believe I follow the mathematics in regards to, um, the council, the way it's being broken down to get paid, um, it, it, but my question is, m- m- Mr. Freeman said six is coming from six different, um, allocations. And that is where my query is. If it says six different allocations and then you bring it back to three, uh, how does that particularly work? I mean, I understand again, the general picture, meaning eighty percent you do because you're council people or whatever, and then the other percentages because the, the work is pertaining to something, but can, can, can we get a clarity on, on that ci- circumstance, Mr. Freeman, um, Council President?
Sure, and I, I, I apologize if I was not clear. It's six different divisions are getting charged to three different budgets. So there's the general fund budget, the, uh, HPU budget, and there is the water utilities budget.
Director, just tell him what the six divisions are.
Oh, sure, um, sure. It is the, the BA's Office, Personnel, Purchasing, the Mayor's Office, City Council and Finance.
Okay, now I see, okay, I see it. Okay, so, so, um, then the query would be is the numbers, as you put them there and you say that nobody's salary has changed, but it seems, it seems, uh, um, for some reason lower, is that, is that reflective? Because it says you're, you're going less.
It's lower.
I'll explain it, Jason.
Go ahead, Jen. Yeah, clearly I was not doing a good job.
No, you did a good job. Um, what, what he, it, the salary is exactly the same. It used to, just say for city clerk, for City Council, all of our money came out of the City Council payroll line item. Now only a portion of it, eighty percent is coming out of that. And the other twenty percent is coming from the HPU and the water utility. So the salary is the same. It's just where it's being funded from is different.
I got it, Council, Council President, I see it's, it's in the other, in the other.
Yeah.
Okay, I follow, I follow now. Thank you very much because I, I wasn't getting it, but now I got it. I appreciate it. It's, it's another, it's if, if I'm asked, um, uh, then I would like to just, um, another brief question. So in this specific department, there is no increase to the budget. Is that correct?
In which?
It, it, overall, in, in.
Administration and Finance?
O- overall, it's a one percent decrease.
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 And, oh, oh, increase.
D.
D, D.
Down.
Down.
Down. Thank you very much. And that is specifically because it's, I mean, I, it's, I'm grateful that it's down, but that one percent reflective where?
I'm at the.
Spread over multiple.
Yeah, it's, it's spread over several different areas. Um, if you look, Manny, um, at the.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
If you look at the, the breakdown here, the, in the left column, I don't know if you can see my mouse. This is twenty twenty-three's number, the right side is twenty twenty-four's number. And the far right column is the year-over-year change. So when you take all of that into consideration and, and you look at the totals, it's an overall one percent decrease.
Thank you.
I think, Manny, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but I, what I thought you were trying to say was like, if the salaries were all still in here, Jason or Director Freeman, do you know what that number would be?
I don't off the top of my head, but I can, I can, um, put that together and send that out to the.
Yeah, that would, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Council President and Mr. Freeman and everyone. Uh, those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Do any other members of the public have any questions? If so, please raise your hand. Nope.
C- Council President, did?
Yeah.
Uh, I believe Mr. Ahmed had a question which somehow.
Actually, yeah, he said it, it was for a later presentation.
Okay, great. And there's another one from, uh, Dan Kowalski.
Oh, I missed that one. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, what would, this is for you, Director. What would the impact on public services if next year's program office, offices budgets were the same as last year's expenditures? I also think it's difficult to comment on the city budget absent the school board proposed budget that I understand might be an eight percent increase. I heard twenty-four percent, but.
Yeah, I, I have, I have not seen the, I, I'll, I'll start from the back. I have not seen the, the schools introduced budget. It was not shared with me nor was anyone from the administration, uh, asked for their take on it before it was introduced. So I, I can't speak to what the Board of Education proposed or introduced. I just want to reread, what would be the impact on public services if next year's program offices budgets were the same as last year's expenditures? Um, it would, it would depend. I mean, each line, each line is a little bit different. Um, some, if, if you notice and you go back in previous years, starting in November, you start to see what's, what's called basically inter, intergovernment transfers. So we are transferring money from lines that maybe we're projecting, we're not seeing as much spent as that was originally allocated to lines that we're seeing, maybe we're overspending. So, um, it, it's hard to give a, an answer if we're not asked for a specific line, um, because they really vary based on, on a year-to-year or program, program.
Dan, if you want, if you'd like to ask more questions, it might be helpful if you raise, if you want to speak, um, to raise your hand. I don't know if that answer was sufficient for you. Oh, perfect. There you go. You should be able to speak now, Dan.
Thanks, Jen. Um, from the standpoint of good scenario planning, I'm wondering if there was, uh, any request from the program offices to actually scenario plan out what would be the impact of a frozen budget? Given that, you know, we're looking at a six percent budget in this portion and some significant increase in the education budget, which I, which I understand is based primarily on increased volume of, of students, which really has to be funded. And I think that, you know, if, if the city were to come back with a six percent here and twenty percent on education and something on the county, because the county taxes never decrease. I think that the reaction of, of participants might be, um, strong.
Um, I la- I believe last year, Director, correct me if I'm wrong, our portion of the county ta- our, our portion of what we paid actually went down for the county taxes. Might have even been the last two years.
Yeah, I would have to look. Last year, I believe it was flat. The, the, the county's budget is, is the way it's broken up is a little bit different because it's proportional to the assessed value, equalized value of the twelve communities in Hudson County. So the county's budget itself has gone up year-over-year. That has not changed. Um, but Hoboken's portion, based on the formula that assesses the tax for the, for each municipality, changes on a year-to-year basis, based on a number of factors, but, but mostly the equalized value.
Um, and then Dan had asked about looking at having a, you know, frozen budget from this year to last. I don't remember the exact.
Sure. So, so I, 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 I think I understand the question. I think the, the biggest, um, issue we have with that, Dan, or, or the biggest issue the city as a whole would have is that the driving force of a lot of the, the growth you're seeing or the, the, uh, Uh, pressures related to a tax increase in the municipal side. Is portions of the budget that are outside of the city's direct control. And those three biggest drivers are the city's pension payment. So that went up three million dollars on its own, and that's a mandated payment that we have to pay to the state of New Jersey. Um, our healthcare program. Um, again, we saw those increases. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, go up about seven and a half percent this year. And then also our debt services increased as well, and those are payments we have to make to um, the bank. Um, you know, per. Money that we've we've taken out um, to bond for different projects. So um. I think you would see a a pretty stark reduction in services. If we had to cover the costs of things that are outside the city's control while maintaining a flat budget. You would see a a pretty drastic change in in city services.
But but the point I'm trying to make is that good scenario planning would indicate that you. You know, plan that out and see what it looks like, and and maybe a flat budget's not an option, but maybe a. You know, a three or four percent increase is a a option that might be acceptable to the public.
I I can assure you that that we go through, at least on the municipal side. I can't speak for what the county and the Board of Ed do. Um, we go through. All these different scenarios to see what different numbers and what different. Um, points we can, we can introduce or adopt a budget at that both is fair to. Taxpayer, um, and also allows for. The city not to have to reduce services in a year over year basis, but um, I think going forward. If there are different ways for us to. Um, lay out these workshops, um, or present the budget in a way that. Um, gives you a some better insight as to what that could look like. I'm I'm all ears on a go forward basis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Roberto?
Yeah, I just curious, when you do the budget, I mean, what are you assuming? The base is? I mean, eh, the the reason why we have uh, more students is we have more residents. So. I mean, just keeping. The taxes on the on the residences uh, the same would naturally give you an increase. As more people move into Hoboken. So. What? If anything. Are you calculating as to? How many more taxpayers there's going to be in twenty four than in twenty three?
So the ratable base went up about point five nine percent year over year. So the actual tax increase is about. Six point three percent, but it is in terms of that impact on total taxpayers year over year, it's only five point nine percent. Because of the. Small increase in the number of taxpayers um, or ratables. That came online between twenty three and the year twenty four.
I'm surprised that it's so small, given the increase in eh, in the population. And certainly, um. The the increase potentially that we see nearly in the school population. I mean, maybe it's just all all our our, it's mostly increase in the population of Hoboken. Renters that do not pay uh. Taxes, or wha- what? What are we attributing this such as such a small uh, increase?
Well, it it's 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 less about the population, Roberto, and more about the total number of units. Or 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 properties that are paying. That are levied by the municipality. If the city is not building. Um, more units, there are not more units to tax. So we could see the population increasing. At a rate far higher than the actual number of units coming online, which is what is actually dictating. A growth in the ratable base.
But uh, so you're telling me that the number of units that were. Built in Hoboken equates to a little bit over half percent of the of the base? That seems uh, very, very low, given the amount of new buildings that are around, et cetera. Um, I I don't know, is there, is there data? Um, for the last three or four years as to how much the ratable base uh, went up?
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's a. Fractional number, I would say, between. Point five and point seven five year over the year for the last four years. I can, I can get that number and share with the city clerk, but. That is the uh. That is the the growth.
Okay, so when we like. Get all these big projects like um. You know, the 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 big buildings that are getting approved, of course, a lot of them are not. Out already, but um. Some of the ones that that have come in. Online uh, over the last few years, that just seems like such a. Small number. I would have thought it would be bigger, um, but that that was my curiosity. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto. Linda? Linda, oh, you're on mute. I don't know why. Let's see if I can. Linda, you have to unmute yourself.
I don't have a question. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. There was one more question in the. Oh, I loved it.
It's just one word, pilots. It's not a question. You know, it's just. I don't. The context is unclear.
Nah, there was just something about overtime. I don't know where it went. Oh, here. Um. What can we expect in the way of overtime from year over year? How much overtime did we have last year in terms of cost?
Um, I I could pull that number. I don't have it in front of me. Um, we budget for an an overall number for each department. Um, it's substantial in some, smaller in others. Um, if you look at the fire department. Um, the. The fire department, police department have the largest overtime. Um, versus, if you look in the personnel and purchasing department, we budget three thousand dollars for for overtime for the entire year. So it 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 really varies. I can, I can go back and look. Um, what our year over year spend was for overtime versus. Um, like the actual versus budgetary, but I don't have that in front of me right now.
Okay, did you re- I don't recall this, but do you recall if we did any line item transfers into the overtime budgets for? Any departments?
Um, uh, yes, we did some in senior, for senior services, so from police to senior services. Um. And I believe. Um. There was one other one. It might have been construction code or engineering, but. That's where um, we made those transfers.
Thank you. Um. All right, I don't believe we have any other members of the public. That want to ask questions. Councilwoman Fisher or Russo? Do you guys have anything?
Council President, I just, um, and and I may have missed it. I apologize for being late to the meeting. Um. Director, a couple months back, I requested the. Um, the overall. Um, total amount of employees in 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 the hierarchy of of each of those employees from the mayor on down. Um, were you ever able to get that completed so that we could get that out? Because it just makes my life a little easier when I'm going through it.
Understood. I will get it for you. We we had to, we had it made and finished, and then we had to rejigger it for some of the reorg. Um, but I will make those adjustments and get that over to you, Councilman. I apologize for that taking.
Yeah, no, it's all right. And and I didn't follow up, so it's, it doesn't all fall on you. Um, but yeah, that's just one thing that that it just makes my life easier because I'm I'm a visual person. So. Uh, if you can get it over, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman?
Yeah, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. Any other council people, members? All right, what's next?
Nope.
Thank you, Director.
Um, thank you, Council President. We have um, the clerk or corporation counsel. You guys can fight it out as to who goes next. Let the clerk go. Jerry's all, Jimmy's ready to go.
Okay. All right, City Clerk's Office. Uh, two thousand twenty four introduced budget. Supplemental materials.
Are you going to share your?
Responsive, excuse me?
Jerry's gonna do it.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
All right, the responsibilities. Responsibilities for the City Clerk's Office. Secretary to the Municipal Corporation, Custodian.
Wait, I'm sorry to interrupt you again, Jimmy, but Jerry, can you help? Can you make? Make it so the correct screen's up?
All right. Go and sit over here.
There you go. Maybe make it full screen would be helpful. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Responsibility Secretary to Municipal Corporation, Custodian of Municipal Seal. Attests to signatures of municipal officers and officials. Secretary of the Governing Body. Agenda preparation for every meeting. Legal advertisement, special meeting. Chief Register of Voters. Handle all elections. Voter registration forms, change of party affiliation. Open Public Records Act, Oprah. Records Coordinator. Update the city website daily. Update the municipal code whenever new legislation. Continue to work with the administration and council members. Conduct oath of officers. Handle miscellaneous licenses. And clerk conducts marriages, ceremonies. Whenever the municipal judge or the mayor is not available. Next slide, Jerry. The organizational chart. We have five employees, the city clerk. Deputy clerk. Two clerks and a recording support technician. And we had the uh. The number of employees for City Clerk's Office has been the same since. Two thousand and twenty two. There's, there's been no change of employees. At that level. Next slide. As you can see, the uh. Employees chart. I'll take you from the two thousand twenty two to two thousand twenty four. Remains the same, five employees. And if the extent that the internal caseload of increases due to Oprah. Requests may be necessary. To hire one additional staff. And we we put that in. Just about every year, but. So far, we're doing uh. We're efficient with with the the number of employees that we have. Next slide. The Open Public Meeting Act. We received approximately fifteen hundred to two thousand requests. Per year, one hundred and twenty five a month, currently. Five hundred and forty one as of. April twelfth, two thousand twenty four. I think we have. Uh, the most requests up there in the in the state. Compared to some of the other municipalities. Work with Corporation Counsel's Office to receive legal advice, including legal research. And drafting legal memorandums. Coordinate with the Corporation Counsel, Special Counsel. Represent the City Clerk's Office. And the Government's Record Council. City Clerk works with the municipal boards. Historic Preservation Commission, Chatri Commission, Alcohol Beverage Control Board. North Hudson Source Authority, Planning Board, Zoning Board. Housing Authority. Library Board, Rent Leveling and Stabilization Board, Hoboken Arts Advisory Council. Hoboken Municipal Hospital Authority, Cannabis Review Board. LJBQ. Pride Committee and the Youth Advisory Commission. Uh, two thousand twenty four introduced budget. Total, oh, point five percent of total city appropriations. Uh, proposed budget. Six hundred and sixty three thousand dollars. Uh, budget change minus seven percent. Two thousand twenty four introduced budget breakdown. By function. Nine percent is uh, for elections. Four percent codification of ordinances. Six percent legal advertisement. And City Clerk's Office. Salaries eighty one percent. By appropriation type, elections twenty two percent. City Clerk salary and wages. Seventy eight percent. Two thousand twenty four introduced budget by function. City Clerk, two thousand twenty three budget was five hundred thirty eight thousand, two hundred forty three dollars. Budget for four, uh, two thousand twenty four budget. Five hundred thirty eight thousand, four hundred and fifty eight dollars. Change of zero percent. Legal advertisement budget. For two thousand three was forty thousand. Two thousand twenty four requesting forty thousand. Zero uh, change, zero percent. Elections for two thousand and twenty three was a hundred and ten thousand. For two thousand twenty four, it's sixty thousand, minus forty five percent. Codification of ordinances. Twenty three budget was twenty five thousand. Request for two thousand twenty four, twenty five thousand. Change zero percent. Total for two thousand twenty three was seven hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred forty three dollars. Two thousand twenty four request. Six hundred sixty three thousand. Four hundred and fifty eight dollars. A deduction of forty nine thousand. Seven hundred and eighty five dollars. Two thousand introduced budget by appropriation. City Clerk salary and wages, five hundred seven thousand, two hundred fifty eight dollars. Other expenses, thirty one dollars. Budget for two thousand twenty four for City Clerk, five hundred thirty eight thousand. Four hundred fifty eight dollars. Legal advertisements for two thousand twenty four, forty thousand. Request forty thousand. Elections for two thousand twenty four. Ten thousand. Other expenses, fifty thousand. Budget requests. For elections, sixty thousand. Codification of ordinances. Twenty four, two thousand twenty four with twenty five thousand. And. Request for two thousand twenty four, twenty five thousand. The total in salary and wages, five hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred fifty eight dollars. Other expenses, one hundred forty six thousand, two hundred dollars. And the budget request for two thousand twenty four, six hundred sixty three thousand. Four hundred fifty eight dollar. And that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Uh, let's see. You could turn the screen off. It makes it easier to see. Oh, you know what? Leave it there. Do any council members have questions?
I'm question why, Jimmy. Why would the election cost be dropped fifty thousand?
Well, last year we had the uh, you know, the right, the council election, and then we had a runoff election. So that brought that cost up.
But the the primary, you know, so you're you're assuming two elections. For sixty thousand as opposed to three for a hundred and ten?
Yes. But don't forget, we had the the. The council election, plus we had that. Runoff election.
Yeah.
That's what brought that budget up for the. Two thousand twenty three.
I think if if two costs sixty, why wouldn't three cost ninety?
I think the word elections costs more because we have different ballots in each one of the six words.
Oh, that's a really good point.
Right.
Well, the run- the runoff too is, we pay for, we pay for the runoff exclusively in the general. Well, the run the runoff too is we pay for we pay for the runoff exclusively in the general and the primaries. That's a that's a cost that's split among the county and the city.
Right, right.
But the primaries on one word, so it's a smaller, it's one sixth of a cost of a normal election.
Really, the the primary elections cost that we we have to pay for the sample ballots. For the primary. And that that runs around forty, forty-five thousand. And then there's there's salary and wages for the employees for the election.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right.
Jimmy, can you go back to the Oprah slide really quick?
Right.
Oh, maybe it wasn't there, but you had said you. I think the slide said. Um, I'm gonna have to look for. Um. You, oh, you said Oprah's support was for people? The the slide, I take it back. You said Oprah's support, the slide said for people, but you.
No, the the number four was after it, but I think that was part of it.
The number four is part, right, part of the the title for that position.
It's civil service has different grades of titles, so that's record support technician four. There's also record support technician three. It's the like, it's a title.
Uh, it's the title that civil service has given that position.
There's only five in in the organizational chart. You know.
Right. And then Cheryl asked, aren't there three elections that need to be budgeted for in two thousand twenty-four? Oh, I think she's talking about the referendum.
Well, that's I didn't want to get into that because, you know, we just if if the need be, then we'd have to have a I guess a special appropriation for that. If that if if it goes that way for the referendum. All right, because uh, it all depends when they when they file it. If they file it at a certain time. Uh, between now and I think now and the end of May, we we might have to have a special election. Somewhere in August or September. According according to the the law. If if not, then.
It'll go on the general.
Right. If it goes past that, it'll go on the generals, save us a lot of money then. Right, right.
Um, thank you. Other council members? All right, I am going to. Haney?
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
A few questions. Uh, one of them would be since the mayor is running for Congress and if he were successful, when would that election be in? How would you? What would the cost be? Roughly?
Well, if if this, this is just what what I what I think would happen. If if the mayor is successful in a primary. And he wins the general election in November. He doesn't have to give up the mayor's seat until he's sworn in in January. So then 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 after that. Uh, and that the corporation can correct me if I'm wrong. After that. If he resigns as as the mayor. If the January. Then the city council president becomes the mayor and fills out his the rest of his term. The rest of his term of the appointment of the mayor. Uh, there's no special election need. They they fill out the existing. Yeah, whatever the term is, is the last year of his term. So then there there wouldn't be a need for a special election. Whoever's appointed mayor at that time continues on till the next election in two thousand twenty-five.
And if he chose to leave early, a month early to set up his offices or what would happen in that case?
Then then I would believe we'd have to have a special election and I mean, yeah, I would have to get the advice from the corporation councils if I'm wrong.
I was gonna say, I think this this might be a better topic for corporation council to address. I understand the concern is from a budget standpoint, but if the technicalities and timing might be best defined by corp counsel.
Right, right.
The reason why I'm asking is is it's really not not to anyone but the candidate. They choose to leave early, they leave early, and you can't do anything about it other than either have money in the budget for it. Or not, and I don't think we could do it in December. Um, I don't know when the election would be or when the money would have to uh, or what budget would have to be. And I was asking that question. The second question was with respect to Oprah requests. In your budget. You had for obviously staff to cooperate with Oprah request. But where where would we find line items for people who contested Oprah request? Other than the legal fee for the city side? If they were damaged or something, where would that be?
I I would have to get that.
I think that's a Jason question.
Hmm, but it would be, I mean, it must, has it happened before and where what bucket does it come from?
Are you like a judgment fund? In other words.
Yeah, you guys, someone challenges your request, takes you to task on it, and then money is lost. Where's it go? What bucket is it from?
Alyssa, are you? Um.
Now Brian should be here.
Let's see.
If their judgments against the city, it it.
Yeah, I'm I'm here. I can't tell you exactly only because I don't know what account it comes out of. I assumed which is a bad thing to do, that it comes out of the normal legal litigation budget. So we have a budget for litigation and judgments. Um, so I think that's where it's paid from, but it's really a Chris Baldwin question. But it absolutely has happened where, you know, we've had to, uh, on occasion uh, pay for Oprah requests.
But is that where you've paid? Do you know, Brian, if that's where you've paid in the past? Because I mean, you have a really big, okay.
Yeah, I don't. I assume it's a bust. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I imagine it is not in the clerks, only because we've looked at the clerk's budget every year for the last, I mean, I have anyway for the last two years. It's a pretty consistent budget. So I feel like the big giant million dollar, you know, litigation um, budget is probably I'm guessing is where those things get funded out of and and not out of the clerk's office.
I will, I will, yeah, I will pull up the any previous settlements we've had to have. We've had their judgments, we've had to pay out and see where those lines would come from and get back to you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Last question is with respect to the elections. Again, I mean, Cheryl asked a question about the referendum question. Again, not something the city could control. If one comes in, it comes in. You know, but you do have to pay for it. Do you put a hypothetical in there since there is a question floating out there and the uh, the possibility, again, what I said earlier about, you know, the mayor, if he decides to go early, would when would that election be depending? Like, what's the the cut dates? Is it if they decide right after the the general in the first week of November? You know, do you have to scramble and do one in ninety days or like what's? You don't have to answer it now. I guess legal can answer it later if they want to look it up, but it just I'm just curious so that you don't get caught flat footed if if these things happen.
Haney, maybe I can ask just a different way. If for whatever reason, um, there is a special election for mayor in two thousand twenty-four and there is a referendum in two thousand twenty-four that's separate from the general election, what? How would that? How would they be funded when it happens if they're not in the budget?
We would do an emergency appropriation and they would be funded in the twenty-five budget.
Got it.
Okay, thank you for that.
But would there also be, I mean, if it was November? Something you could just do a line item transfer if you had money elsewhere that hadn't been spent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Haney. Oh, I didn't mean to do that. Uh, let's see. Do any other? There we go. Manny?
Uh, yes, good afternoon again, Council President. Um, bad brief question because I'm a little follow up in regards to the the interaction that just occurred because there was two things meshed. Um, in regards to the Oprah request, because I saw the chart and the chart says uh, approximately two thousand come in and they're they're worked upon. Uh, my question is in in the budget, is there since Mr. Clerk said that it it gets worked internally. There are only five employees. I would assume four technically would be doing this work. Um. If you would need extra help, is that also somewhere in the um, budget where you can, like you just said, right now, a council president and a line item that you can take it from somewhere and put it for another employee to process so many Oprah requests? And would it also fund itself due to the fact that also you get paid, you have to pay a fee towards it?
You don't have to pay a fee if you if we don't receive money when someone requests.
Uh huh.
When someone has an Oprah request, we don't get money for that. Um, I have never seen and correct me if I'm wrong. Mr. Farina, I've never seen us add staff specifically because we were backed up on Oprah, correct?
Correct, right.
Well, and I would add that keep in mind that the staff in the clerk's office, Jimmy, correct me if I'm wrong, but when someone makes a request of a legal document, for example, the the staff sends the request and it coordinates the response, but it, you know, a request for a legal contract, we go to corporation counsel and they would actually pull the document out and get it to the clerk. So there's an aspect of this work that is that is, you know, being spread over all the different divisions based on what the request is.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, so for for the benefit of members of the public, so the understanding is that there is a cross uh, association or benefit between corporate counsel and city clerk. Um, so they would obviously use their own and appropriate budgets uh, separately and equally simultaneously. So that's what I could understand from what Mr. Mr. Um, Councilman Doyle just said, yes?
Yeah. It's it was an example. Obviously, it happens in every division, but yes.
Exactly. Should it occur? Okay, um, uh, I had another question. Where is it? Yes, in regards to the these elections again, which is what was was being spoken. Um, again, I don't I don't see why not prepare? Well, anyway, why not prepare that process we have the election? And then not if we don't, we don't use it instead of finding money from somewhere else in the budget, even though I know that that that's a possibility at any time due to the fact that it shows up on agendas constantly. But would it be more prudent or not?
So the the discussion we had is um, in short, yes, we absolutely could budget for a hypothetical. Um, the the only the only concern about that was whether it the election happens or not. Um, if it were to happen, we would have to pay for it, whether it be a budget transfer or an emergency appropriation that we would raise in two thousand twenty-five. If it doesn't happen and we have budgeted for it. That's money that we've essentially asked the taxpayers to pay. It would be, it would, it would lapse in into surplus, but if it happens, we're gonna have to pay for it anyway. If it doesn't happen, we would try to avoid that burden being put on the taxpayer.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you, um, Mr. Administrator. Yes, so members of the public, I I believe I have it clear that better, let's say, for lack of a better phrase, let's borrow it later. Borrow it now if we need it. And pay for it later. That's what I'm hearing. So we don't burden this budget. Which is is perfectly understandable if, you know, taxes go up higher in the school board. Um, I would like to just, Madam, uh, Council President, I would just like to thank, thank, uh, the clerk's office for their uh, clear presentation and their their budget. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thank you. Madam Chair. I'm pardon me, Councilman.
Thank you.
Um, see. Any other members of the public? Any council members? Uh, I will just say I'm, I don't know that I would be such a fan of budgeting for those elections without knowing they were gonna happen and for different reasons, because that money then could be transferred for use elsewhere. Um, that's my opinion.
I would agree, Council President.
Uh, thank you. Oh. All right, thank you, Mr. Farina. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, who is our last person?
That would be me.
Wait, before you start, I think we have, um, Paul has arrived. Okay. All right, Mr. Aloia.
Thank you. All right, can you see my screen?
Yes.
So this is the Corporation Council, and the one thing I'm gonna figure out here is how do I change pages?
I just hit page down on your keyboard.
Oh, there you go. Thank you for that. So Corporation Council's mission is actually taken from the code. And Corporation Council is the chief legal officer of the city and the attorney and solicitor of record for all proceedings. So generally speaking, all legal issues that come um, either before the council or lawsuits that are filed against the city, the office of Corporation Council handles. Um, as everyone knows, um, Corporation Council actually oversees not only internal staff, but a group of attorneys that have specialties to handle some of those um, outside legal matters that come against the city. Responsibilities with the City Clerk, you just heard that in some instances, um, we provide um, help with Oprah, whether they're asking us for specific information or in the event the City Clerk um, has questions with regard to what should be redacted or whether something um, is clear enough as a request, but it's certainly not as the clerk indicated, they get approximately two thousand. It's far from two thousand, um, that that my office handles. Um, you know, maybe we do ten a month or something like that. Um, so maybe it's a hundred and twenty. Um, that's just a guess, uh, by the way. Uh, but I certainly know it's not two thousand because that would be a full-time job for us as well. Um, purchasing again RFPs, um, that come in, the documents, once we're awarded, we do the contracts, construction code office. Sometimes we go before the construction Board of Appeals. We also provide uh, the construction code official. Um, every so often he'll have a legal question or two. Tax Office, we don't do a whole lot for the tax office. They have a separate uh, tax council for that, but uh, we do help them with sales tax issues, um, preparing resolutions um, for the sales taxes and sometimes when things have to get waived. Contracts, we draft all the contracts. So every time you guys make an award of a contract, um, we have to obviously put out a contract. We also do all the amendments. So every time a contract is increased, I'm gonna move my screen a little bit because I see the sun's hitting us. Um, is increased, we change that affirmative action. Um, we look into our affirmative action harassment complaints, things of that nature. Sometimes that's handled by outside counsel, but sometimes we are able to keep those and handle those internally. Employee discipline. And generally speaking, all employee discipline is handled in-house. When I say it's handled in-house, I'll call it, we act as a prosecutor when they have a hearing, there is another outside attorney that comes in and acts as the hearing officer. And then, of course, the the employee normally will have a union representative as well as an attorney um, provided by the employee. And then general litigation, again, um, we handle what we can inside and then the rest goes to outside legal counsel. Um, public safety, you know, we do grievances, resolutions, public employee commission. Administration is kind of the same thing, analyze, conduct legal research, draft resolutions and ordinances. And here's our organizational chart. It hasn't changed over the years. Um, of course, we're overseen by the um, Administrator's Office. I'm I myself in Corporation Council. I have a great um, assistance with Alyssa Wells, who's Assistant Corporation Counsel, and we have Andrew Simaleka, who just joined us um, recently. I'll say he's been here maybe a year and a half now, but still recent, and he's our full-time prosecutor. Um, in Jason's a presentation earlier, you've heard they're gonna probably try to do that with the Public Defender's Office, which we're not in charge with, but we think it's a great idea because Andrew's just working out fantastic. So you'll see a small um, allocated amount for prosecutor. That allocated amount is for when Andrew is either sick or on vacation. We do have, I'll call it the same um, two prosecutors that we had previously that were handling all the prosecuting work. They'll only come in now when Andrew is either on vacation or causing sick. Um, and in some instances to control that budget, Alyssa or myself are also prosecutors, so we're able to uh, keep that down as well. And then, of course, we have Anna, who's the greatest legal secretary on the planet. And so our employers are for it. It hasn't changed over. And so our employers are four. It hasn't changed over the years. I'm still hoping to add a fifth employee. But we'll see if that happens, you know, in the future. Certainly not looking to do that today. Maybe toward the end of the year, we'll start looking at that again, because I do believe we can add another employee and keep things more work in-house. And it would also allow us more flexibility right now if either myself or Alyssa were ever off together. There's no one, you know, to to cover. Knock on wood, we always plan around each other, but with illnesses and whatnot, you never know something can happen. So that other employee would not only be able to potentially reduce our outside legal counsel, but would also have, we'd have better coverage. And so here's the, our budget is 1% of city appropriations. The proposed budget is 1.5 million. Year-over-year budget change is a decrease of 4%. And here's by account, Corporation Counsel is 35%, Special Counsel is 65%, Claims Against the City, I guess, is 1%. And you can see that Municipal Prosecutor is 1%. And again, that's $20,000. I'm not sure if it's a exact 1%. I think they're rounding up here. Salary and wages is 30, 35%, and then operating expenses is 65%. And here is our budget in comparison to 2023. You can see that the salary line has gone up. And again, that is in hopes of potentially, you know, September, October, somewhere in that area, potentially taking on another employee. Our Special Counsel, Outside Counsel, we've dropped by $100,000. Labor Counsel, we've removed, only because that is part of Special Counsel. So I think that was just one of those line items that is left over historically. Claims against the city, keeping the same as $5,000. And the Municipal Prosecutor, that's what we spoke about earlier. That's really only to cover illnesses and vacation. And by appropriation type, you can see Corporation Counsel. We have $530,000. Special Counsel is $950,000. Claims against city again is five and Municipal Prosecutor is 20. These are the same numbers. We're just looking at them in a different format. Any questions?
So if I may, so Brian, I'm sorry, you had said that you hope to add a fifth, but I don't, is is that in the budget or?
It's not in the budget for a fifth for a full year, but that's what the, I want to say that it's a, I can go back, but it's like a $45,000 or so dollar increase in our salary budget. And that is in, if we decide that it's appropriate and we're able to do it, to hire somebody, maybe, you know, again, October, September, it's it's fluid as when the person would hire, but that's why it's not a full year salary.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, it's Paul. I was curious if you do hire that other person, how much are you looking at in savings?
I'm sorry, how much? Excuse me?
How much you're looking for, how much you're looking at in savings if you hired another person?
Well, that's difficult to tell. As far as savings, I would certainly think the person would more than cover their salary. Because again, what would you be doing is handling more stuff in-house, right? So right now, there is some labor stuff that that we have to farm out just because, you know, Alyssa and I run the, I'll call it the day-to-day as well as handle stuff in-house. So there's only so much we can do. So that third person, I'll call it in that team, and I'm not discounting Andrew, but Andrew does 100% Minnesota Prosecutor. That job keeps him busy throughout the entire day, so he's not able to fill in on anything else. So that third person would allow us to even have more stuff handled in-house. So it'd very easily cover their salary, and I think, you know, it would be more than their salary, frankly. But as far as a number, well, if you just, if you did simple math, the person, let's pretend we're paying outside counsel at a decent rate, you know, normal rate is 150 times 2,000 hours a year, $300,000. So I think the person would save us at least $150,000, doing very quick math. And why I did that is the normal attorney works about 2,000 hours. I think it's 2080s for the for the city, but pretend it's 2,000 to make the math easy. 2,000 times $150 an hour is $300,000. So that's what we pay outside counsel. So if you figure salary and benefits is about 150 for an employee, subtract the 150 from the 300, you're getting around 150,000 in savings. And then I would probably actually subtract maybe another 50 off that and say $100,000 in savings. And the reason why I would track the second, the last 50,000 is not everything that the employee would do would be something we'd send out to outside counsel. So that employee would also help write resolutions and ordinances and fill in and just help some some responses get more done in a more timely manner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, I have a question for you. As far as Special Counsel, Outside Counsel, how much legal work is being done outside of your budget? So, for example, if there's legal work happening in the Finance Department for bond work, things like that. And the follow-up to that is, are you also overseeing that in the sense that you're managing those hours for those attorneys?
So with regard to bond counsel?
Not specific to bond, it's really to everything, right? So how much other legal work is being done in the city of Hoboken that is actually not being budgeted through your budget? And then who is managing that? Is that just the individual director? Or is there an oversight component in your department for those other allocations as well?
I can say I work with Director Brown, and he certainly has outside legal work that we team up together to help him. The only other legal work other than bond counsel that I know of would be tax counsel. And that goes to the Tax Department, they, taxes, yeah. So that certainly goes to the Tax Counsel. We don't oversee Tax Counsel. And then the attorneys for the boards do work, so a lot like the land use and things of that nature. I don't know how much of that goes through, I'll call it the city's budget versus the board's budget. We can certainly get back to you on that.
Yeah, and 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 I've seen different administrations do it different ways where everything ran through Corporation Counsel's office. And then, you know, it got broken up, you know, some some things are in different departments because that was the work that they were doing, so on and so forth. But what I'm trying to understand is the total amount of of legal work throughout the city, so that we could kind of put a number to it to see what that exactly is.
I'm under the impression, you know, 95% of it is is through the legal department, but again, I'll get back to you with those numbers.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thanks, Brian.
Whoa, any other council members? Mr. Aloya, you had said you're talking about Oprah requests, and sometimes you also review them. What what triggers corporation, what triggers the City Clerk's Office to send you ones to review?
So what happens with City Clerk's Office gets it, if they aren't sure whether or not a public document is identified or if something should be redacted, they'll send that to Alyssa specifically. And then depending on what the request is and, you know, how busy we are at that point in time, there's also outside legal counsel that provides opinions in that regard and help. So I guess it depends on the nature of the request and the size of the request. I don't know what triggers, other than maybe them being unsure what triggers them. That's more of a question for them. But usually, when it comes to us, I find that the clerk's offices, I guess, is pretty good at identifying things where they're not sure. Is this asking for a public record or what needs to be redacted? Or maybe it's massive and they're not sure what to do with it. And when I say massive, they ask for documents from, you know, 2019 to the present. And for whatever reason, they send that to us, but what we'll do is just send that to IT for a search.
So I'm just making this up, but if someone were to ask for like, and if someone from the clerk's office wants to answer this as well, that's fine. But if someone were to put in an Oprah request for emails between the mayor and you, that, well, you would be getting that anyway. The mayor and zoning officer. Would that come to you?
We'd have to ask the clerk. I don't know the answer to that. When I say I don't know the answer, we've gotten email requests like that, but would that just trigger something? I don't believe so. You know, normally what they would do is they would send that to Administration's Office and the, you said zoning clerk? I'm sorry, it was the mayor who else? They'll send it to the two offices, and now that might come to us to review the emails for, you know, any redactions. Okay, because a part of it depends upon the time. You know, if I had to guess, in my mind, sometimes I believe, but I've never asked the question. Why they'll send us requests like what you just described is if there are too many emails, the the time is too long of a period, like for the last two years, the last year or whatever like that, where there's lots and lots of emails. That could take hours to review every email to see like, is everything in your public records? Is there anything confidential? Is there an employee being spoken about? Is there, you know, whatever, all the different reasons why something might not be public? And all those emails then have to be redacted. So that would come to us. But if you ask for, you know, emails between, you know, the clerk's office and, you know, Jason or something like that for last week, I would I would assume they can answer that themselves. Because it's only a week long. How many emails could there be?
Yeah, I I I'm actually kind of surprised there isn't like a set criteria on what you would have to review. And I was just thinking about, I don't think you've ever reviewed an Oprah request that someone has requested of of me, and I'm sure the rest of the council is the same. I I don't know, I just.
Alyssa could more, Alyssa could more handle your questions on, because she's the one who handles the Oprah requests normally.
Okay, that's fine. And then you had said four employees, and you had, you've had four employees, you said for the last three years, I think?
At least the last two years, but yeah, I don't, I kind of forget exactly when Andrew started. But even before Andrew, we had another employee. So I think it's been four pretty consistent. But now the, I'll call the assignment change, like if you go back to Scott. When Scott was here, he didn't just do prosecutor, because we had multiple people working on prosecutor. Where now there's one person in charge of being the prosecutor, and that's Andrew.
When John was here, was there five employees or four?
I think there was five, but then you lot like Scott left, right? John kind of had his own, Alyssa did her thing, and you were kind of down that second assistant Corporation Counsel that you typically rely on for your work.
I believe you're correct. My recollection is we were in, we vote, every so often, like maybe twice in my, since I've been here, my tenure, we've hit five, but it's always disappeared really quick. So we've never been consistently five for like a year or something like that. It's like a month or two, and then someone leaves for some reason.
And then you had said you were down, I think, 4%?
That's correct, year-over-year.
Are you, or is any of your salary lines coming from HPU? I can't remember who the people were. I think it was, I don't think you were in that, right?
No, he is not in that.
Yeah.
Now, the 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 reduction in in Corporation Counsel's offices is, I think, most directly seen in the Special Counsel line.
Got it.
Which which closely mirrors what we spent last year now.
All right, here's a couple of questions from, I was gonna say the audience, crazy, from the residents. Well, I don't know if they're all residents, but have the expenses for the Special Counsel been within the budgeted amount for the past three-year municipal budgets? I hear appropriations for various Special Counsel on council meetings agenda rather regularly. I think to that, Mr. Aloya, probably what they're talking about is when we give an individual more money, but the actual dollar amount that we budget for, we've never spent more than that. It's just a contract for 20 grand, and then we're making it 25.
That's correct, and we purposely do that to to monitor the attorney's work and also to control the outside counsel, right? So every time we hit a certain milestone, we want to look at it, and we have the council has the opportunity to say, wait a minute, this is, you know, tell us more about this litigation. Do we want to continue to do this? So that is purposely done in lieu of, even though we know litigation might cost us, you know, if we had to guess, $100,000 for the year, we don't just give $100,000. We do like, you know, we make up a number, but it's 20 or 25 or 15, whatever it is, to make sure we're keeping an eye on.
Great. And then what were the expenditures the last few years for outside counsel? What sort of issues? I can't recall what they, I I know this year it said 300, did it say 300?
The it, what the amount is 950,000.
What was it last year? Do you recall?
Last year's expenditure was was right around that, but it was 1 million and change. We just lowered it by 100,000, so it was 1,050,000.
Do you remember the year before or not really?
Not really, but I know it was, it's gone down every year.
Okay.
When I first started, it was about 1.4 or 5 million is my recollection.
And outside counsel, what sort of issues, what sort of issues do they deal with?
A lot, a lot of times it's land use, large litigation. We don't have the ability to do that. Land use, large litigation, certain lawsuits, affordable housing. Sometimes rent control now is an issue that we all, we're all aware of.
Thank you. And then the last one, how do we pay the, do the attorneys for all the boards get paid out of your line item?
No, the boards have their own budgets, is my understanding.
Thank you. Wait, I think there's one more that can, oh, no, it's not. All right. And then we have Haney.
Thank you, Council President. So I have a few questions, and one of them goes back to the Oprah that we heard from legal and from the City Clerk's Office that we have an exorbitant amount of Oprah amongst the highest in the state. And the question I ask is, why? When there's cities that are much bigger, but a lot more cases, that you would think in terms of proportion to population, what is it that the public can't get that they're forced to come in and sign a piece of paper and say, give me X, Y, and Z? Why isn't it digital and online and easier to find? So that we don't get overwhelmed with these requests if the information is just given. In the past, I've seen council members at city council meetings doing Oprah requests, and that's just bizarre. That even a member of the council has to dig for information. So if a council person can't get it, I don't think the member of the public can get it very easily either. So it's more of a suggestion that that's not a badge of honor that you have this many Oprah requests. It's actually saying that the information is more difficult to get than it needs to be. Number two, with respect to litigation and the size of the litigation that's around, there's some much, much larger ones that I've seen this year and the past year than I've seen in the past decade. And one of them, which I'm not a part of, is to do with that Avalon Bay and that the Zudo and that large suit. And you're dealing with something that's going to change the value of their properties in the tens of millions, if not the hundreds of millions collectively. How could we sit here and think a million dollars that the person on the other side, again, I'm not a part of that lawsuit, would not fight more ferociously because of the amount that's at risk? And wouldn't the city have to also defend that and be prepared to be overwhelmed with that? Because we understand that suits underway. I just can't see how it's not something abnormal from the past and that it should be addressed in terms of amount of staff, in terms of amount of dollars that you have to protect the city to defend. With respect to the board lawsuits, I heard that the individual boards have their own budget. The question there is that where does the overflow come from that? If they have a $200,000 budget, the zoning board and the planning board, when they lose their cases, if they're forced to pay legal fees, is that something the insurance covers? Is that something that rolls into Mr. Aloya's budget? Because it would be unpredictable. He wouldn't manage that case. He wouldn't be able to foresee it. How would that be dealt with? And where would that money come from? Again, because there's been more lawsuits at the board level that we're seeing, and I think that should be looked into. Why are these boards being sued more? And do they have the appropriate budget to protect and to defend these lawsuits? So you could jump in at any point with either one of those, but if you can, please.
So thank you. With regard to the current litigation, all the litigation that's going on in the city, we certainly believe that the budget that has been prepared is adequate to pay for any costs, including the outside legal counsel costs that will be incurred this year. With regard to any litigation, I'm not speaking on any specific litigation. You pointed out that the higher the stakes, you know, the more money that people will spend. I certainly believe that's correct, but we've taken that into account with regard to formulating our budget request for outside legal counsel. With regard to the size of any litigation that's currently going on versus past years, I can say that I Um, I can say that I, since I've been here, um, I can probably go through a year after year. Um, there's always one or two large, um, costly pieces of litigation that seem to be going on. Every year that you kind of look at, you're like, wow, this, you know, this one litigation is eating a substantial, uh, part of, of my budget. Um, so that's again, something that we've, we've considered and, and looked into. Um, regarding board expenses. You know, to date, I can say in my tenure, the boards have done very well in managing their budget. Um, I don't recall, but maybe I wasn't involved in a board running out of money. But internally, sometimes we'll do, um, as you know, at the end of the year, transfers that the board approves. Um, and my recollection is we even did some last year for, from my office to someone else's office. But so that's, that's how those are covered. You know, you get to move the money around kind of at the end of the year. If someone has unforeseen expenses, and that's why we always try, even though we budget, uh, certain amounts, we always try to come in under. We don't try to spend our budgets. That's certainly not from the legal perspective, any, any of that.
And then the insurance that, uh, meaning if you.
Oh, so sure. Yes. So we are involved. We are a member of the JIF, meaning Hoboken, the city's a member of the JIF. A JIF is a joint insurance fund. It's a bunch of municipalities that come together to form an insurance company. Um, and in the many instances, when the city is sued, the JIF actually covers it and they have JIF attorneys. That is separate and distinct from my budget, um, doesn't impact my budget. My budget is only impacted by those things not covered by JIF.
So if you have an employee personnel, someone which happens often, you know, director or someone gets let go and he's sued the city. Again, years back, the fees were similar, what the city would spend and what the plaintiff would spend. But in the last few years, the outside cost of legal is far, far higher than what you guys are. You know, proposing at the 150 mark and you're up against attorneys that are getting paid two, three, four times that amount. So if you have an employee that sues the city. And they sue you for legal fees and they win. Does that come from the JIF? Or do you have to all of a sudden put that in your budget? You know, sorry, from your, out of your budget.
Yep, I understand your question. So normally when an employee, a, a former employee would sue us for discrimination or something, that is. More often than not covered by the JIF. So the JIF would assign an attorney and then the city has the deductible. Um, and once it meets that deductible, it's all on the JIF. Um, so there is, you know, it's, it's like, it's like your car insurance, for lack of a better word. You have a deductible if you get a car accident, you pay the first $500. Um, the city has the same thing and it's done in percentages. Um, but then at some point in time, if the expenses become too high or even the judgment or a settlement becomes too high, then the JIF is picking it up.
And then for outside, in terms of not employee like that Avalon lawsuit I talked about, if the city is forced to, forced to pay their legal fees. Does that also come from the JIF or does that come from your?
If it's not covered by the JIF, it's not covered by the JIF. So if it's not covered by the JIF, we'll pay not only attorney's fees. Um, if there are any outside legal fees, meaning if we hire, or you know, if we handle in-house, there's, there's no fees other than our salaries. But if it goes outside, we have to pay the attorney's fees as well as any judgment. There's no insurance. You know, if it's not in the JIF coverage, then we are on your own.
Can I just, so if it's not a JIF attorney. If the JIF isn't representing us, the city's paying for it.
That's correct.
And I guess you would just do emergency, emergency appropriations or what would that do to you if? Again, a student not involved with a large suit up there and we, we all admit it for big stakes. So. There's going to be a lot of money going around. I'm just curious if something like that happened. And it was a $2 million or $3 million legal bill, obviously blow out your budget. Would we be forced to bond or what would, what would Director Freeman have to do? But it wouldn't be expected. It would just sort of happen.
That's a finance question. And again, you can do emergency preparations sometimes, depending what it is, you may or may not be able to bond. Also just, uh. The size of the judgment, you know, whether you're going to appeal, whether there's a stay. So there's lots of issues that, that would have to be looked at.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roberto?
Hi, um, this is my first time listening to this. So I just wanted to get clarification. What is the difference between special counsel and outside counsel? I mean, are we talking about different types or is outside counsel included in the number for special counsel?
I'm sorry, it's the same, it's the same. And there's no different outside counsel, special counsel. It's someone not, uh, not an employee, an attorney, a firm that's hired outside the city.
Okay, okay, that, that was it. The, the previous, uh, the previous discussion, uh, answered all the other questions. Thank you.
Sorry if that was confusing, switching those two words.
Manny?
Yes, hello and good evening again, Council President. Um. My question would be this. To corporate counsel, corporate counsel, this is, um, again, for me, um. Like a refresh, of course, from last year, corporate counsel 101 within regards to the allocations. For the, um, outside counsel and the special counsel. So, um. It was clear the discussion you had earlier, but I want to clear up a fact. So then, if let's say I'm reading a. Agenda and in the agenda, it says, um, there is an allocation in a resolution for a certain amount. That a hypothetical, it's for the, I don't know, the shade tree. And they need a certain amount of money for a special counsel. So that is not from your fund of 9,000, whatever it was. Am I correct?
So you understand what he's asking?
No, I'm, I'm not sure what you're asking.
What he's saying is if the Shade Tree Commission for some reason had to hire special counsel. Would it come out of their budget or would it come out of your special? Counsel line? Is that what you want?
I think the Shade Tree Commission's, um, not an odd example, but I, maybe Jason could help. I, I think they would actually come out of my budget because. They're not like an independent board, like so, uh, the, the zoning board and planning board, they have their own attorney, their, their own board. It's a board that can sue and be sued. So it's really a separate board from the city. Where the Shade Tree Commission, I don't, I don't believe they have a legal budget, so it would probably come from, uh.
Okay, so for clarity, so then yes, a rent levelling board or a planning board, anything with the word board would be and would have its own. Funds if they were sued or they sued someone to pay for it themselves. It, it is not necessarily going to come from your budget unless it's something extraordinary. Yes?
I think you're, I, I don't know that I would say anybody that has the name board. But yes, those other, there are other boards with their own budgets, their own legal counsel. Um, and those boards you just mentioned are, are good examples, um, that have their own budget and they should be able to cover their own costs. Uh, but when, if not, it falls on me, again, there's, you know. There's no, it's mine, right? We're all one big city. So if someone runs out of money, we always try to do budget transfers. So we stay within budget overall.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corporate Counsel. I just want to clarify, um, being a person that asks the question a lot. In, in council meetings, I just want to let people know that, um, because we do get frustrated with, with the, um. Special or the increase, but we just want to make it clear that everybody has their budgets. They work within their budgets. You have yours. Especially for a special counsel or outside counsel. In this case, you did not go over or exceed what you allocated. Last a year, calendar year. So this year you were able to say, well, based on what. I used last year, I could come in lower this year because I know that I spent this much, right? And that is, again, my question would be, or, or rather my clarity would be for, for your budget, meaning that's how you came in. Under budget and that's how. You don't have to always spend your money for your special counsel. And I mean money, your funds.
We're, we're always trying to keep the money down. Obviously, we're not trying to spend it. We're trying to save as much as we can for the taxpayer. So whatever we can handle in-house, we do. We also try to manage the outside attorneys. Special counsel, outside attorney, same thing, um, to keep. You know, their expenditures in line with whatever the litigation, whatever object, whatever they're working on, whatever their project is. And as you know from asking questions and feel free to ask, I love your questions during council meetings. When we and the council approves a resolution that says an outside attorney or a law firm. Is approved to do and they don't exceed $50,000, they're approved to work on this or don't exceed $20,000. More likely than not, you're going to see is coming, we're going to raise that in the future. That is just a control that the council seems to like, but I love. That makes us monitor the attorney and make sure the outside attorneys are keeping in check. They're doing their work and they're not just. You know, spending the taxpayer money. We turn around, we haven't looked at them in a year and they spent a hundred thousand dollars. We only give them small increments, so we continually watch what they're doing.
All right, correct. I follow that and, and I'm hoping everybody else does. Uh, one last final question. By the way, I had a saying, but I'll say it in the council meeting in regards to, to what you just mentioned in Espanol. But, um, my final thing would be, um. When you were speaking of possibly adding an employee, um. You were saying that we would save in the budget. Roughly in your calculations, what I, I tried to do them quickly, but, um, roughly, um, a hundred thousand. Additional or a hundred thousand that we just saved from.
Oh, no, a hundred thousand addition.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Thank you again, Madam Council President. If I could thank, uh, uh, corporate counsel for their presentation and, uh, for their explanations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Blanco? Melissa, you're.
I haven't written down my crap, questions specifically, so bear with me while I try to word this. In, uh, Brian, in the case of appeals, um. Does the council? Need to agree with the mayor's office? On the appeal because looking at numbers and looking at probabilities. Uh, of either winning or losing the case. We are failing big time there. Um, so how does that appeal get a go? Does the council have a, a say in it? Do you, um, like I'm, uh, I'm dumbfounded. Um, you know, because I have to, I've had to set, you know, uh. Multi. Tens of billions in reserves on le- legal cases and, um, uh. It would be not something that would just be, oh, we're just going to appeal this. It'd have to be even, uh, consulting outside, um, not just attorneys, but those in the know. Uh, on the lie of potential liability and of, uh, of a. Of a loss and it seems that Hoboken has just appealed, appealed, appealed repeatedly. So you get my drift of asking how that has been able to go forward and how. We might be able to rein that in.
Um, at first I have to say that I, I think I disagree with your. Belief and maybe I'm wrong. I'll have to, I'll have to do an anal, analyze all the cases.
Monarch would be one of them.
Okay, so there, there, there are some appeals that we do. Um, the council has controlled appeals, uh, they say through the budget sometimes, um.
No, but not just through the budget, the, the decision to appeal is a yes or no. Who gives an approval on that? Because we have a ridiculously large outflow on. To a person with experience in large, large cases and, uh. I, I, in continuously appealing, uh, when it's a dead horse case. You see what I'm saying? So how is the decision going forward? Who decides? Because it's not, it has not been. Uh, a wise choice in a lot of these cases and involves very large dollars.
The administration would decide, in my opinion. The council certainly has say, but ultimately the administration decides, but.
Yeah, that's problem, that's problematic. Uh, so we need to do something, uh, just the council listening in, please. Yeah, uh, with that, because I mean, uh, I'd have to go back and Oprah everything, but you'd have to, um, and show you. You know, case law and whatnot to show that this is just a ridiculous concept to just let someone. You know, pull the trigger on, uh, in multiple appeals. Second, uh, so if, uh, if the council can, uh, write up some, uh. Something that will give them, uh. The power to make these decisions because the dollars are extraordinary. Um. Second question, and I hope the council can pick up on that, is when, uh, we have funds that, um. Excuse me, that are set aside for parks or something. We voted on it. I actually held on to the campaign flyer that said what we were voting on. In council at one point, the question came up when all, uh, when all of these legal fees were coming out of a. Uh, beautification or parks fund or whatever it's called. That, well, wait a minute, I don't think the people believe they voted on it. Look at proportionally what we spent. On lawyers versus what the intent of the monies are for. And then they tried to come back in council and say, oh, well, the people knew it and we, and we have in. Uh, no number involved too. So I'd like to also make sure that. The, um, that that fund, whatever its name, is not. Touched for legal fees any further. I don't even necessarily agree with this idea of increasing taxes. We should even keep that. Two percent going when we've got, um, suggested, uh. Increases in budget above inflation, but at the very least. Close off tapping into that fund for li- legal fees. If we can get those. Two ordinances written, we will be saving mega bucks. Uh, on legal fees. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Cheryl?
Yeah, hi, good evening. Um, I'm a little lost right now after that. But, um. Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a rule of thumb. In other words. The board's budgets are attached to a department. So zoning, planning, rent control, that would be in the community development budget. I'm trying to think, I'm just trying to figure out, like, is that just the rule of thumb or? And forgive me, Council President, you're actually on my screen. So if Council President got sued. Is that your budget or is that clerk? Uh, is, is there a rule of thumb for us as the public to know? Beyond zoning, planning, rent control board, what legal fees are attached to what departments? So, you know, and, and, and just to get another example, so if something happened to some. People who were playing basketball on some Hoboken, you know, supported recreation, something and they got hurt. And they sued the city, would that be recreation or would that be corporation count? Where is the rule of thumb? Uh, I was trying to give examples, but how do the public know if it's your budget? Or some other budget? And what, and, and then if it's another budget, how do I know where it goes?
I certainly appreciate the question and the examples you gave are easy to answer, right? Because if Council President were sued or someone falls. In the city, 99% of the time, that's going to be covered by the JIF. So it's nobody's, it's, it's nobody's budget, meaning it's not coming from the city's budget. Other than the payments the city makes to the JIF, which, which are like, you know, you're buying insurance. So generally speaking, everything's coming through the legal department budget. I think the easiest way to answer your question is, I'll get back to you. Um, because it's all public record, obviously, and I'll provide you with. Other than my budget, where are other legal expenses? And, and I think it was Councilman Russo asked for it earlier. Where are other legal expenses? So I know, as you indicated, community development is one. So Chris Brown, Director Brown, has some legal expenses in his budget. I'm not sure who else may or may not have legal expenses. So when we look at those legal expenses, we'll look at, and I'll provide that to you. Not only what are those legal expenses being provided for? Um, meaning, so is that just legal expenses because they're, um. um, taking property or answering questions and things of that nature, or they're actually handling litigation? So there is a, a distinct difference there because if they're just providing legal advice um, to a board or whatever, you know, that's one legal expense. On the other, a lot of the questions seem to revolve around litigation and, and active litigation. Uh, but once we figure out where all the money is, um, and I don't think there's much other than, than Corporation Counsel's office, then that will answer your, your question. Um, but with regard to someone being sued, that always comes through my office.
Okay. So from, it, it, thank you. And I, if I understand you correctly, it sounds to me like generally outside of Corporation Counsel for legal expenses that are lawsuits, the, the other, by and large, and there, you may turn up other things, but by and large, if there's other legal expenses, it's going into community development, by and large.
I would think that's correct.
Share. So, and this is, I don't think so much a question, but maybe a thought for, I don't know, future budgeting, because that seems to me like then for staffing purposes under the community development umbrella, they are getting impacted in ways that other departments don't, which may inhibit the ability to have maybe the needed staff in, I mean, land use is, it's, it's a huge, huge portion of any municipality's costs. So just a thought, but thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Uh, I am going to allow Melissa to speak again. Allow. Melissa? Did you have another question? Oh, that didn't work for some reason. Did you have another question, Melissa?
Uh, yes, this is directly our, our point uh, uh, related to Cheryl's question. Well, she, she makes a very good point and she was asking when there's a transfer, not uh, how frequent, but when and how would the public know was the question? And in the case, in the case, no matter how small the case, but when it happens, again, you could have situations where a very low frequency, but high severity and you wanna, you wanna wrap your arms around it. So, um, so what Cheryl was asking is very pertinent of how would you know? Um, because you would in essence be doing, you both, both the board and the city has a ledger, you would have an account that would do, this probably isn't the right terminology, but an interledger transfer and, and to Cheryl's point again about how would the public know? And the impact that it had, the ledger uh, account itself that would accommodate that transfer would be an in- interledger transfer, would have a separate account and every account has a definition with the account. Okay. So, um, that transfer, if it was going through uh, uh, community affairs or whatever, the development, um, then you would see it directly and you want to see it directly in there because uh, you don't want to say, oh, let's grab it from this other department instead. You know, uh, that, that, you know, it, that you can uh, track it with audit. So that's where you would uh, go find it in the, the actual ledger and make sure that you're not uh, swapping out departments between, uh, when you're doing the transfer. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Um, do any other council members have any questions for Corporation Counsel? No? Thank you very much, Mr. Aloya. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
All right. We'll see you tomorrow.
We're back, back here six o'clock tomorrow night.
Hey, before we go, because I don't want to get in trouble because we started this as a regular meeting. Do we have to have a public portion?
No.
Like a regular?
Oh, yes. Yeah. Oh, yes. Yeah. Public.
I mean, just to, I'm not saying anyone has to talk.
All right.
If anyone wishes to speak in public portion, raise your hand.
On these issues?
No, don't we have to have just a regular public portion? In a, because we
Yes, that's correct. It's a public meeting. We should have a public portion.
Yeah. Manny?
Thank you, Council President. I am availing myself to the public portion because I didn't want to raise my hand again for the Corporate Counsel. Um, I would just like to say and remind folks that um, tomorrow is a very important um, day because there's three things happening. Um, another budget hearing, a, I believe, a um, school district um, presentation, I believe, is they're presenting their budget as well. And a zoning board uh, meeting, which is very important because it's um, about Third Street and Washington um, in regards to the Capital One building. So members of the public are torn between so many very important uh, things going on in the city. So um, I'm grateful that you're going to present uh, the meetings on the YouTube. Um, I guess that would help members of the public that are going to be in, in any of the other situations, but I'm just making you and the public aware, Council President, that there are many, many things going on and I hope that members of the public are aware of that and um, uh, I guess uh, plan accordingly uh, to said uh, uh, events. And once again, um, Council President, I appreciate the time. And I also wanted to say one thing that I was looking through my old papers from last year. There was a whole separate conversation um, in the budget in regards to uh, council um, members um, having uh, their personal devices um, being provided by the city. I'm sure that that's not going to be um, in this budget, but I believe that there was a conversation of you getting um, to, to reduce paperwork and stuff like that. And I don't know where, where that ever ended. I don't know if it ever came back in consideration. But if you follow what I'm saying in regards to the, the um, tablets or, or computers that were supposed to be, um, perhaps, um, introduced. So anyway, that's just a curiosity that I had and, and because I was looking at the papers. And again, thank you, Council President. I'm not going to take up no more time, but I just hope that members of the public are aware of those three um, uh, different events that are happening tomorrow. Thank you very much for this meeting and have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Um, and just uh, Rod had texted me just to make sure everyone knows he is going to put this on both YouTube and Facebook this evening. Um, we have no other members of public signed up to speak. Motion to close public portion?
Motion.
Second.
Hi.
Motion to close the meeting?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. Let's see you tomorrow.
Out for now.